I do want to remind all our commissioners if we are here. So keep that in mind and I will turn it over to staff now.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners, Jennifer Malone, planning commission staff. I appreciate you all taking time to be with us this afternoon. We've been working with our consultant Alan Steinbeck to help us update the future of my new section of the Tampa Harbor Land Use Plan. He has been in the community doing some outreach and then so we're getting feedback from the community members that is in addition to all of the feedback that we already have from the vision survey that he's been looking at as well. So now it's time to get your feedback. And while he formulates his recommendations, that's the purpose of today, to need your feedback. He has some really good questions for you all and hopefully we will get some good input. And if Melissa or Ian has anything, I'll turn it over to Alan.
I would just add for those who are watching online that the Planning Commission workshop doesn't have a public input component to it. There are other ways through our website and the public input meetings that Jennifer and Melissa have been organizing for the public to give input. This is really for the planning commission to give input. Staff.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be back here. I'm a former planning commission employee and delighted to be working on the organization again. Okay, my name is Alan Steinbeck and I'm a project manager. And we are working hand in hand with a group of staff. I wanted to recognize not just Jennifer, but Melissa Dickens, who are the team project managers on behalf of the Planning Commission. Sean was on our working group here at Tom College. And then the city leaders and Matthew Pleasant are also here. The city has been able to this project and has been active working with us to promote the organization so far. What we witness the whole way to align the conference of land recommendations with the land code and some of the things the city is doing. This initiative is part of the LIDRA Pride 2045 initiative. I've been brought in to be sort of quasi independent to give some advice and do an assessment of the land use and provide this report to provide input to this larger conflict update process. So our recommendations will be thorough. They will be advisory and they'll be taken up in the tracking of the conflict. So it's managed by us here at the agency, city of all of us. The purpose of this assessment is to learn how to be these categories and associate policies that are successfully working towards the goals of the conference of plan as well as the vision for the 2045. And so we're really looking forward to this vision and trying to take into account these things where Tampa's inclusive, sustainable and resilient. Where the natural environment, historic character and diversity cultures enable a vibrant setting for all. And with this vision statement come a lot of different topics around housing, around stewardship of the natural environment, around the use of transportation and about maintaining the cultural nature of Tampa's and its work. The elements of this project include a public and stakeholder engagement process, which we are now working on. You always were the final probe that shows on the results that we're working on. We have the staff working group that I mentioned, it's a two agency group of planning commission and city of Tampa staff. We've worked out performance measures and done some number crunching. There's a whole report on that, which includes an assessment of a partial level assessment of the city of Tampa about what's been happening from 2010 to present and what we anticipate happening from today until 2045. And so we've done some some technical analysis on this work. We have a policy on it and looking at rolling outcomes. And then these recommendations for the land categories really focusing on categories themselves, but all the associated policies. As soon as you start talking about future land use categories, it brings up a lot of different topics from the future land use element itself, but also how it affects the city of Tampa. So we've completed our initial assessment and these are the findings from my, my, my company's work that we've done to date. So these are really what I saw in this work and what came out of that stuff that we've done so far. Tampa's been growing very fast over the past 10 years. It's always kind of been going pretty fast, really fast lately. The housing development has been accelerated over the past few years during COVID era instead of dating this slow down. But signs now point to a secular downturn. So we're not sure what next year is going to probably, how was suggested it's a lot slower to go. The housing market will go from majority of single family to majority of multifamily in the next 20 years. Now, the current makeup of Tampa's housing market is about 6% single family. And at some point in the future, that's going to flip. There'll be a majority of multifamily housing. Existing neighborhoods plus new development are not sufficient to meet future demand for family housing. There is a lot of single family housing. There are a lot of three bedroom plus units in the city today. But the pattern of development that's happening right now includes a lot of smaller units. One, two bedroom apartments that don't support a full family and a family with kids. That's going to be a problem in future if people family shut down housing development is actually delivered that kind of housing. And the numbers that we need is to know where this is for. And growth forecasts indicate a need for over 90,000 residents for the next 25 years or so. But it's something you may, of course, but it's, it's a lot. So it's good as we plan for future land use to have a fairly aggressive number to look ahead to make sure that we can meet states' natural requirements that we can accommodate or what's supposed to be here. So we have that 90,000, I would think. When we looked at that number and we put it onto the land of Tampa and looked at what land was available for development, how much vacant land there was and everything. We noticed that there are, there's a limited supply of all the available land. At some point around that 20 year horizon, everything that gets developed in Tampa will be some form of redevelopment. All the vacant land is basically gone. So think about the future where everything has to become something else than already something in the first place. And the more successful Tampa becomes and the more built out it becomes, more active it is, everything's already got a viable plan to use. So it's really hard to take something out of it and not try to use it and turn it into something else. And so that issue of how do we grow? How do we reform? How do we continue to thrive and accommodate more people becomes a more difficult one over the years as these issues of the land constraints on top of the issue of the redevelopment. I'm happy to take any questions during the conversation if you want to stop.
With the 90,000 units, how, what percentage of those 90,000 units do you need for like 8,000?
Well, it's, it's around 25% is probably about the need. Only about 10% of them really effectively need them. So there's a pretty big gap there from a, from a high level planning point. So fortunately, the future land use plan and the conference plan incentivizes being in the high density development. It is only in limited areas. We've seen in the past 10 years, a lot of really leading to high density projects being delivered in the city, a lot of housing units being delivered. And so the conflict in general is accommodating these things. This new type of development is needed to accommodate this local housing. On the commercial side, basically the nature of everything has or is changing significantly. The way to go to the office, retail, education, tourism, industry and technology, the whole economy is just maybe being transformed by the four eyes. The situation when we look at the commercial spaces, there's no shortage of retail office space. There's very high vacancy rates now, especially coming out of the primary part of the COVID era. There's, there's double digit vacancy. New residential development will command approximately twice the amount of space needed for new buildings. So every person that people are accommodating down needs twice as much square footage for housing needs, which they need for their development. So housing is going to end up competing for space, space constraint environment. When you have that situation, some of the land use, when used, formerly used, planned and or envisioned for commercial needs to be developed as residential or any substantial company. So we will have a significant and sustained demand for housing to be put in places where there were otherwise planned for anticipating. For commercial in particular, employment efficiency for this new type of development in the future, making sure that we have development in planning centers closer by transportation, larger buildings, higher density buildings. Because we don't want to have the availability for the city's economic base to be strained by the fact that there's pressure for land that depends on building. And last, on commercial, there's, I believe there will be a great repurposing of these new buildings. This is sort of thinking more about the need for rehabilitating, retrofitting, protecting, energy and just, where we have a, a building stock that was built for the past and a feature that holds to the things that we need to adapt. We also look very closely at mixed use issues. The conference plan promotes in various ways mixed use development in the long standing policies of planning commission to have in the mixed use cities, especially districts. And what we found is over the past 10 years, there's been a big shift towards mixed use areas developing and growing. When you look at West Shore, recently Midtown, Downtown and Core City, where you have those places basically having more of a central development, higher mix of control coming in here. And we've measured that and they're definitely becoming more of a control. It was one of the key concerns, say 15, 20 years ago, having a place, Tampa be a place where you could live in this, in the central parts of Tampa. And that's definitely leading to competition. Land use changes have had an impact on travel behavior, but now with respect to mode choice. So the hope has always been to make people use transportation more efficiently, effectively by using different modes of transportation. And what we find is the mode of choice has not changed that much, even though travel behavior has changed. People are driving less per capita and sort of less driving going on for a person that shows up. But we haven't seen a major shift in what mode of transportation we use.
Quick question. I assume you don't look that deeply into this, but is there any sense of the chicken and the egg kind of concern here in terms of options that are available that are lack thereof that drive with your account? If you put another way, if a light rail or a rubber tire transit was available, you'd think your studies would show something different.
They would. And I think transit is definitely the check in this case. And the T O D is the A, right? That you can't have, you can't optimize reuse of the transportation without the blessing in addition on this. That is absolutely true. I was involved in some of the studies of that many weeks ago and found that to be the case. As, as in organizing, a way to organize development better than fixing. And we also found even back in the day that Tampa was holding behind all of its peers around the country in size. And this accomplished what it set out to, to develop. So I'm not here to advocate that tonight, but I think that it is, it is something that would transform the redevelopment potential, especially of North Tampa and the central part of the city. So in with respect to mixed use and other types of building, larger, more easily developed sites will be first to change. So we're seeing the easiest places to build is still now. You think about the 20 year trajectory and all of the easy ones you're being built now, then each year that goes by will be more, more difficult to find sites that are going to be taken. And it will get smaller and smaller. So we need viable site, sites, viable solutions for our smaller sites to make sure that they can be reused and adapted, get info, develop if it works and continue to expand and continue to have our mixed use core first of all. That's a function of the conflict and city's rules. But we, but that is definitely a name that we need to be thinking about, thinking about the future and we need to explain the problem that happens.
How, the question is, this is strongly based off our current numbers right now. There's so many areas around us that are developing more and more. And I mean, today I think I saw, I saw a whole new project of stuff that is being developed in another area that is not expected, you know? And as those develop, how much will that affect us because that people have more options? You know, Wesley Chapel, I think is a good example. You know, they've, they've blown up over the years and you know, it's, it's something where so many people, I'm a Realtor, so so many people that I work with, you know, real, you know, Wesley Chapel is an alternative, right?
So the, we've discussed this as a team and as a group. And there's so much demand for being here in quality life, so high management. There's a demand to be everywhere. We look at what's happened, what's happened in Polk County. Polk County's got a number that I didn't need to pause when I first started working here. And Haskett continues to currently devastate and it's appropriated as well. But there's, it's almost as if the demand is somewhere less accessible for someone to come live in this region. The special thing about Tampa that's quite different is because of the accessibility to so much game of being here, accessibility to major employment centers in the region. There's no reason why people can't do that. There's such a strong drive to be close to that and how to make location decisions. The Tampa's never going to be a bad proposition. You see, and now you see, we saw in South Tampa in particular, especially the area of South of the Indians, when the northern section of South Tampa, just be transformed through housing investment, people investing in neighborhoods. If you think about that, the reason that happened is why people wanted to come there. And you start to think about the other neighborhoods in Tampa, you see people trying to make location decisions in a similar way, like what's happening in Tampa Heights. Where there's a lot of residential investments, a lot of Tampa natives and newcomers who are seeking housing in the city, who want to be here. So I just, I think that the desire to be here is going to be strong and the desire to work here is going to be strong. There will be jobs here. Hillsborough County is so, so enormous that you, unlike other regions where you have a, like a Beltway around the city. You have employment centers being built up around the Beltway. Just it's a little bit different apparently than it is today and that makes these sort of relationship things. So Tampa has that going for it as well. The next county over here becomes a major, I think that is related to what the topic is now. So that's where I'm longing for you to do.
Do you look at other regional municipalities like Orlando, Jacksonville? And are you seeing some of the same trends play out there or be truly unique because of like yours driving?
Well, Jacksonville and Jacksonville has never had the economic mojo that Tampa has. It's got its own different culture. I would say it's sort of less proud of the politics than Tampa is. That may be changing now, but I don't see that happening. And it's always been slower growth for a brief. Orlando just lacks the, they have, they have, their problem is they have this poor economy, this addiction economy, service economy where the wages are so low that they, it's really hard to get enough traction. You've got to just downtown to manage a lot of international business, something like this. Just, just lacks a little bit of, there's something in for everyone just here. And so I don't think if you could hit, let's say, going to fit with each other in some kind of competition for a reason to succeed. I think Tampa's got a lot of things going for it that you probably know, but I'm sitting here and trying to capitalize on that.
I would just also add that the Bureau of Economic Research does the, they do statewide projections, they do county wide projections. They look at all of that and how the population is shifting and you know, maybe Miami-Dade is starting to build out and be more redevelopment and Ellis might have that one in. And that's part of what they look into and they give us the number for 2045 that is what they anticipate Hillsborough County as a whole to grow to. And, and we reevaluate our projections every five years to try to accommodate shifts that might occur. So far, we have not seen that shift really that it's slowing anything down. And, and of course, there is, there are a number of assumptions, as Alan said, that go into how we distribute that projection that they give us for county block to the city, the unincorporated area to plant city. It's some terrorists. So we know some about what's, how each of those places are growing. We make certain assumptions based on that and extrapolate that.
I just wanted, I just came from Polk County and there, 1 million people by 2023. That's how fast they're growing. But also just because of schools, South Tampa, somewhere was hoping to still 2,500 students. It's been two years. They have over 3,200 students in that school, they need to invest in the seeds and they're trying to acquire property to build more students down there because they're growing too fast.
I would have bet a lot of money on folks out there wanting to, whatever, like 2050. It's going to double in size. So we, we've got, we took advantage of the feedback that was garnered around the vision earlier this year. So we reviewed that and summarized here as a place for doing land use success. And we heard from people that culture diversity is created and the character were important to them. There's a strong sense of need for that in people want to have that preserved. There's some people concerned with the change in neighborhoods. There's also many people calling for diversity of housing affordability in public, they're loving affordability, affordability is on the next right now. A lot of people were talking about developing transportation, wanting to walk the neighborhoods, access to jobs and having other choices to use and some concern about that. We internally did a SWOT analysis of strengths and weaknesses that are the strengths and weaknesses of the planning commission and the plan and land use categories. It's sort of eternal for the humans. So these strengths were having an opportunity for heritage intensity, having housing policies in support of housing types. Good policies played as context. The weakness is included a mismatch between some of the policies of the plan and land development. Some people said the plan is challenging and some of the policies are unclear to support that challenge. And we need stronger policies in the first areas. The opportunities and threats are those things that are outside of what you can see, the things that the planning commission doesn't control, that are sort of opportunities to look outward and the threats about what's outside of us. So not opportunities you have informed, informed public through education about the plan, about that people are not educated a lot about the planning. Recognizing some of the activities of how the planning of the neighborhoods within areas of the city. Continue to work with staff and the planning department has been created in positive direction. And sort of leveraging Tampa's national reputation, this is what we recognize Tampa has achieved that reputation in a way that's different from how it was in recent memory and how this has changed. Some of the threats include political and neighborhood pressure and sometimes a few of the ones that should be making, I don't agree with all this. Identifying Airbnb's and investors in housing and institutional investors who are putting pressure on how it's secure. There's a little bit of lack of clarity in just being the land development code, the city's roles and interpreting the plan and making sure that everything is, is aligned in the review process, in the standard review process. And of course, our friends at the legislature are, that's just a threat every year, it seems sometimes. Is Tampa moving in the right direction? So we're moving into the segment that I think is interesting because we started asking several groups of people about this question. We had some stakeholder meetings with the Tampa Bay Women's Association. We met with the citizens of the library, we represented the campus CRAs. And we also met with a fan that has some of the conversations in some neighborhoods in Tampa. We had two neighborhood that we see in the city. And we asked this question, I put out there that we were, we have good quality of life, also some challenges. At the public meeting that we held, these are the results from that meeting. So we had an evening meeting on the 21st of September and we asked people the serious question. And I wanted to do some results to show you what we said. So based on the recent and past current situation, we got a five out of five. Most people agreed that we're moving in the right direction. We don't hear this in every meeting, sometimes we count, so very hot. Regarding the Tampa Conference of Plan, how difficult does it stand? How the future land use categories and policies affect the policy decisions? A little bit of a mixed bag here, some people found reasons, but the majority of people are down on the left side. Which areas of the city have benefited the most from development and investment over the last 10 years, if all that apply? And a majority, a majority of respondents said downtown, which is the neighborhoods, but almost everyone said that. South Tampa was second with West Shore and Third Air and Third and Fourth. New Zep and New York City are coming in for those here. And interestingly, we asked the reverse of this. Are there areas of the city where there have been pronounced negative impact? So this had a different flavor to it. We're, several areas where identifies South Tampa being like Central Tampa, I for Hillsborough, Central Tampa for Hillsborough and West Tampa in particular, the ones where people are watching this and they're like, that's. We asked about preferences around development itself. What are the most important benefits of the development following and housing supply and affordability came first? Neighborhoods look like services say. What types of housing are most needed in Tampa, what's what, what? And I was interested to see that people had prioritized and thought of small scale, but it didn't happen, duplexes, triplexes, et cetera. Mixed use projects, townhouses and accessory building units were some of the top ones. And single family problems was actually the most, well, instead of people over, it's taking expansive about mixed housing. What are the most problematic impacts that lead development following? And the top two are around transportation, lack of connectivity in support of transportation options in the top one, additional traffic congestion being said. I was surprised to see the bottom two, which were lack of habitable units in the area and the pace of growth is too fast, meaning the next though, in comparison to the impacts of it. So the people in this meeting ranked those low as we often think of this, think this things, the public in general, that's how we're concerned with it.
Can you speak to sample size and how representative of the rural community?
This data is sample size we had between 40 and 50 people on this call, which is a pretty good sample size for something like this. Once you get over that number, it's really hard to change the results no matter how many people. This is kind of work. I don't know who was on the call because this is totally anonymous. It's a, it's a virtual meeting, but we did ask people to express their opinion in. We've got some help from the city to promote this and it hasn't been attendance. So it was definitely broadcast in a way that was widespread. I feel like having done that, we got a cross section. We also are looking at this information in relation to what occurs in direct listening session with neighbors and CRA votes. So we have this waiting to get some of the rumble. Did you have? Did you have, did you have anything, like what was the nature of your question?
I'm always curious about sample size. A lot of direction that we take potentially can be based on some of the sample sizes and the questions that we ask in the surveys. So I really want to hope a little bit, see. Number one, we have a wide sample size, decisions to make. And then number two is a representative of broader community and not just a subset of folks who like to come out and talk. It's a very much a problem, right? Folks who don't want to come out, they're different. So it's kind of a two-pronged thing, trying to release tires around type of folks and quantity of folks.
We had, we had, we added the other meeting, definitely 50 plus people in different positions. So they're a pretty, pretty large number of people that's. When trying to ensure new developments compatibility, existing neighborhoods rank following in order of importance. So compatibility uses, number one, something that I feel like, I want a babe shot in my house. And again, last year, I was just surprised by how different the new structure was came before the movies. They weren't concerned about use itself, orientation of buildings. They were the actual housing structure. How important is it to incentivize the following, your land use policies? We are looking at density bonuses, bonuses and incentives in general. And this is one of the most important elements of work, I think, in these categories and how they would be to the bonus structure, this completely in the help of the plan and in the land development. But we wanted to ask about these topics where people thought it was most important to me to incentivize transitory development and affordable housing in the community. They thought it was important to do all of them, to be more important to get on their schedule. So we have created some preliminary recommendations. You will all receive in your packet this report, which is an interim project. It gives you a quick summary of the performance measures, some of that more technical word that I mentioned earlier. It provides you this summary of feedback with this package of recommendations. And then a fairly extensive description of the time of the project to address in terms of what is the existing division now and what is the desired outcome for a work on this topic. Here is leading us into the next phase of the project, which is policy recommendations. We're going to sort of identify recommendations for this project and getting these specifics. So as we stand here today, our goal is to take all the feedback we've gotten, include the feedback tonight, and move it to that next phase of the project. So hopefully the rest of our, our conversation here can be around those things. We have some preliminary recommendations around creating new land use categories. So that's a potential, I think, if we're going to be changing the future of land uses in terms of density and intensity and also some possible map requirements. Then looking at the density bone structure for new use project, affordable housing, it's here. We get the top one specifically, promoting this initiative, addressing how the affordability, really calibrating the conference plan to create planning initiatives, including the urban villages and how they relate to the urban plans and the city plans. And then emphasize the policy regulations that design compatibility issues. There are some policies in the common that cover issues of design in the comments for built out. One of them, with that, you know, definitely tell a line with what's between top land. So I guess this is kind of like, everything's on the table. We're not, we may, we may not be representing traffic change or anything, but all of these are of the previous mission. And they have to, but future land use categories, I'm going to invite you to consider. So with that, I want to turn to some feedback and discussion. Because I hope that we can start answering these questions tonight, you all start sharing some of the possibilities. We'll have this briefing and one other chance to review the findings of this project. But now's the time to sort of put in what we are, what we are. So these two questions, what are the top three to five issues we need to address? So I want you to think about what's important to you. And maybe a sentence or two about why, I'm hoping we can get some participation from members on this. So the second question being, are there any potential recommendations that you'd like to consider? I've met the five preliminary recommendations. So this is, if you have that thing that's been nagging you about the plan in particular, or something that you'd like to see us really drill down on. Very helpful to hear about that tonight, to have that information available. Get back after tonight, if you want to submit something, right? But I'm sorry to, Jim, there's some background. So we'll start with question number one. If you'll think for a second, I'm going to pause for one name to give you as a, to try to come up with three things.
Oh, Elliot. Transportation, especially with reference to motor choice. Affordable housing and economic development in the community. I mean, that's, everything else just hinges on those three.
What is economic development?
Well, economic development is essentially the economic viability of the community. We've got to have, we have to have a diversified economy. You can't just, like, like you're saying, well, I know it's a service-based economy. We need to be, we need to have a diversified base. So another, another COVID happens and service population goes out, you know, our economy still has something involved. It's, it's making your economy more of a, it's.
Right.
And I guess that's, that's the word that I'm preaching, the resiliency and all three of those items. We got to have choices in our transportation networks. Something goes down, something doesn't work right. Gas prices go crazy again, we need public transportation for people to fall back on and get to their jobs.
Right.
We need resiliency in those three items. Affordable housing. People, people need to be able to work close to where, or they need to be able to live close to where they work. I don't have that situation. Not people I live almost an hour away now.
Right.
For quality of affordable housing.
Right.
I can't find it. So those are my three items and the other was in today's.
Great. One of our findings was that in South Tampa in particular, there's theoretically zero housing for 200 million in the rural area. So everyone making the area even in the towers of that was 95%. Just in the last several years. Right. And I, I feel like the word resilience is so. Because I used to do that, we're talking about, we're talking about. Thank you. I had a question. Yes, I may have missed it. You quickly mentioned performance measures in there. Did you show the performance measures in the slideshow? Or are you talking about performance measures that are going to be to come? Are we speaking about performance measures that we're using now as we move forward? Like, are we going to be creating performance measures?
None of the above, because we've already created them. They're not in the show. They were used to generate the findings in a public application.
Okay.
But we have a report that is going to be published in there.
Did you speak about those performance measures some, or is it a secret?
It's not a secret, no. We, we, we looked at housing affordability, like I just mentioned. We looked at each of the planning areas, looked at housing affordability. You'll see a summary of that in the report that you got in the packet. So when you look at the report, it's not in this presentation, but the report includes a summary. That part isn't secret. And the rest of it isn't either, but we didn't, we just had a lot of them. And some of them related to things like, you know, what types of land use is playing things. What types of rezonations have been, some things that usually only planners hear about, you know, quite honestly. So there's some of the performance measures were developed to point at our team. So that if we had a team of planners to look at them and say, oh, what's going on here? So yeah, that's, I would refer you to the packet that looked at what's going on. To, you asked me to say what, what they were. What we looked at, we did look at affordability, looked at transportation. So the finding about transportation vote share is a presentation that's based off some analysis. We did about transportation travel. We wanted, want to make sure that we're moving the needle on transportation behavior or finding of the department.
Right.
We all know what the affordable housing score is. And that, that traffic is in your report about which areas have become less affordable over time, especially in the past few years, South Tampa. We, we also looked at the land use and land availabilities and my comment about you're running out of land, but it quite frankly, to develop, the piece we developed came from an analysis of partial local data that we did in combination with some reporting important to the general plan commission to look at and to turn those. So that was another one. And then, and last one I'll mention is that the change in land use, talked about mixed use areas becoming residential. So we wanted to see like, where's, where's the transformational change happening? And that was some of the work we did at partial local speed. Did a change of something to residential. It's sort of the most common thing that's going on in the wild.
Let me, let me ask another question, but this will just shoot to the brim of the crowd today here. Do you consider the fact that the city of Tampa is losing lots of industrial land in your calculations for what is residential, what is commercial, how that shifted here by commercial? Are we meeting neighborhoods or are we commercial exclusively?
Yeah, there, we had a sort of a separate conversation about industrial land and some separate findings about that. When I talked about commercial development in this presentation, I was not talking about industrial land. But there, there is, there is quite a bit of it when you add it up. Some of this, like port centric and, you know, down the port will go and have any city that wants to go in there and hopefully they don't, so we have to have a, of course, like a reservation. But they can accommodate people and there's other spots too. But I, I, because of the way it is, maybe you could make the case for the area around the port city towards the north of Adamo, where that's the spot where I think there may be less pressure on industrial land down the future. And, and you may have already been dealing with this specific project, it has already happened. I'm guessing it probably will continue to happen in the concept of D4 city as a 45, please. But that's, that's pretty nuanced and I think it's something we may want to drill down into in the second half of the project. Not a whole lot of nuance here, but it's, it's a good one to bring up. It is, it's a challenge. I think it's.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to catch up. I was just wondering how that related to all this development of.
Thank you.
You know, I'll answer any question, but what's important to you also?
Yeah, I'm going to try to come out a different way. I mean, that, I thought my fellow commissioner hit it on the head with the big bucket items that we wrestle with every month in here. But I, sometimes when I come in here, I feel like the last three years, we're also balancing interest, developers' interest, agrarian interest, very frequently, particularly in East County, interest of residents. And that we are the planning commission, so we should be planning. I feel like long before we took these jobs, the development in the three municipalities and unincorporated counties is almost random in terms of its density. I don't, I don't feel like there's any intentional density that we inherited. And I know that part of our planners will try to get to that point, but I guess what I'm saying is balancing the interests of these competing stakeholders. That would be my desire is to come up with a vision, you know, that, that ties some themes together, helps us manage the interest of these different constituents. But at the end of the day, someone would ask me what our plan is instead of having to pull out a 500 page annual. I could answer fairly quickly and then point to examples in our community where we really do have intentional density. I know we have many examples, but I think for every example I point to, every month we come in here, I feel like we've got an hour 35 popping up next to an hour 10. And someday there's going to be an hour 60 next to mixed use. And to an outsider, it looks somewhat random. That's my, my own impression. So if others share that view, I wonder how we get.
And is your statement about the randomness of what's coming in the door or the randomness of policies as they exist in the plan and power?
A little of both. I mean, I don't mean to sound critical, because our staff is outstanding though. But the reality is, we can only deal with what's in front of us. And a lot of these privately initiated amendments feel like Band-Aid approaches that, you know, it's like a long game of Legos that has no beginning or end to it. And I think some of it does go to maybe getting to a more simplistic description of what we're trying to achieve. That's my.
I would agree. I think there needs more clarity, making more specific building policy you talk about. So again, same factors, like you mentioned in your report, you did an excellent job of covering this. A lack of clarity between land development and policy and it seems to get plenty a lot. And it's like, who's on first? So that might help clearing some of that up.
Chantation sort of brought up a little bit here, and I just think in the past, the design of it has not helped it. I actually rode the hard buses for about 10 years as my primary source of transportation. And, you know, for example, the downtown stop, that's not my final stop. There's nothing around, you know, if I'm trying to come to work downtown, for example. When I get down here, I still have another 25 minutes to either walk to where I'm going or I don't, you know, I'm not sure there's even any other sources of transportation within downtown. And so the same thing up in USF where I work, you know, the station dropped you off at a Walmart. Like those uses are not making sense to utilize that transportation network. So who's going to be on that? Who's going from, you know, the cemetery in downtown to the Walmart in uptown? It just doesn't, the connectivity, the, the, it just, I had to always bring my bike. And then if two bikes are, or two holders are full, I'm biking around the city. You know, it just, it just, it was never easy, you know? I think we can do a better job planning around the transportation corridors to help us with some of these issues.
Agreed. It's been hard to match up the fellow bus investment. TOD and bus lines was for a long time very abusive as a discipline with the VRT projects that occurred around country. That's sort of changing a little bit, but Tampa's never quite gotten over that. Got additional, even additional left and just get closer to having the development around it. It's not, it's getting towards what you're describing.
Well, we brought up like the need like for 90,000 units and 25% of that we needed for, you know, for families. I don't think they've had, since I've been here, any discussions or thoughts on planning for any sort of densities or zone for areas to ensure that like families can be in, you know, like exterior, you know, can be accommodated. And I know like the family unit is certainly cheap and short at last, you know, 10 or 15 years, you know? As many other forces, you know, things like that. I guess how do you go about planning for that? Because I mean, families typically are going to need more space. And what I've seen here in a free period of time is in the areas where it's kind of popular for families, you probably need more density in these areas. But we had a lot of policy, we had recommendations from staff that you need to have this type of density. But then there's groups of people who don't want, you know, density in their backyard and, you know, the NIMBYs. And they want you to go someplace else. And so then it's election time and, you know, I, I see the politicians, you know, they don't like. And, and so then it's, uh, it's election time and, you know, I, I see the politicians, you know, they vote like G2, you know? They want to protect these people. And so they say, okay, well, well, just like with the FBR, and they took out the city of Tampa, right? Now that's taking density away, but there's rebuilding for that. Yet pretty clear that we need density, you know, or to be able to accommodate. So how do you go about paying for larger scale places when we're moving density? Well, I don't, I don't, I'm just asking, but I don't know if you've seen this in other places, other metropolitan, New York, Chicago, Miami. You know, how are they planning, you know, to preserve family? Family, your culture centered around family, thinking back to your memories, it's your family, probably not, you know, that's where you get the culture. So how do you, how do you plan for that?
Well, I, when I think of, I think of the building structure, it's one thing to require it, which is really hard to do. It's another thing to incentivize these spaces, your affordable housing requirements for you. Where you can accomplish some of that. There's also just dealing with certain housing types. It's really hard to say, thou shall not build near one of the apartments, I guess it's possible to do that. The trade doesn't matter. These other metropolitan areas are, um, allowing it, incentivizing smaller and smaller units in certain areas to give them to increase density, um, to make things sufficient, well, things that you don't hear about here in the public and council plan. So I think it takes, it takes a concerted effort to think about that as its own mind and policy. Try to, try to put in numbers of that, um, and think about that. But I mean, the main thing happens is you have, you see more and more streets, neighborhoods have investment and then you have outside investment where the income level of that investor is higher than the person who's there. And you see that happening everywhere. So it's not just families, it's also by lower companies or, or more significantly impacted in any, in that situation where also they, they don't have to do that while this works. So, uh, you know, that's, that's where I think it's issues directly in the neighborhoods. And it's a much more complicated issue with this land use policy can solve or land ownership can solve. I think it's got to be more proactive and fortunately you have the city that's, um, has a major housing initiative where it is, you know, endeavoring to create housing in the city. I think that, well, that, that robustly implemented is very, very high in their sustainability now. Because that stuff comes out of there, it will definitely have to mix, I think, in your difficult, medium private situation. So it's both policy, digital, public policy for housing. But I think it's imperative based on the specifics.
So like, like have you seen any other towns or like larger municipalities trying to do like ins, uh, like, yeah, like, but like density policies are like in.
I have things and yeah, most of my hobbies have been in the cities. Uh, when you talk about like forward ending stuff, um, this is going to break new ground, other sort of things. The tough part is we seem to be, let's go to completely go out there barriers without that. Even if I do something trying to best cause my priority, it's, 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 it's reasonable being, it's kind of policy. We can look, I, I, I'm, I'm the one that brought this up, of our team, that I saw in this decision. So I'll go out and try to find something.
Oh, we, yeah, we bring it in, and if not, we have to think about our, we should go. We have to think about how do we, you know, promote that? And because that's again, that centers, you know, around our culture and just actually the industry of Tampa, you know, with large communities, especially in the D4 area, you know, who's received. My people who sit down here because they were, they were part of the leggers. So, you know, they used to come down quite often back in those days, you know, but people were 10, 12, 13, 14 residents and starting to see more people starting to build, completing the building together. Again, so you need larger, you know, facilities. So, yeah, and it's not out there that we created, like the development point, I don't, it makes more financial sense for developers to be able to develop micro units now as trying to make a fit more for the more, I understand that's what it brings up now.
Yeah, I think that, um, the more culturally distinct neighborhoods in Tampa, like West Tampa, for example, there's nowhere for your kids to live or the family in your neighborhood, then they're gone, right? So, and definitely are seeing, and that, that's an affordability issue, but that's also in the type of.
It's also hard to do that. Family centers, you know, that's why English is today. And, you know, for kids, I mean, where do you live? Unless you're wealthy.
I guess the strategy I would recommend is a serious look at transfer and development rights within neighborhoods and communities. We have well-established, I like to say, say, heavily detached neighborhoods here in Tampa that don't want to change. So if they have an allowable density of ten dwelling units per acre, that community is built out of seven dwelling units per acre. Have some sort of mechanism to basically sell those three units per acre to another area in the city that can accept that. And do that, do that development in those areas where the development is acceptable. The community can maintain its community character to what it wants.
I would, I would put that on the pile of incentives and density bonus. It's a, it's a, it's in the family of density bonus essentially. You've got someone requiring that right, right, to increase the density per acre. That's how this would work. Good work in some places.
I think one issue that you could use a closer look, building on what Commissioner Fernandez was talking about, transportation oriented development itself. We don't really do it very well. I mean, we use the term a lot, expand it around a lot, kind of like affordable housing. But when the rubber meets the road, it ends up in a Walmart parking lot or like some other weird commercial or just a strange place. Like, why don't we have beautiful images of transportation development that like players have dreamt of for thousands of years now? Or if they exist, can we look at places where they do exist? And the possibility of bringing them here, so maybe good examples, because we speak about the mix of housing types that we need, that's obviously. I think we need a mix of transportation oriented development types too, that's kind of missing around here. So maybe just a closer look and a better understanding for us who live here, I live here, me too, I'm part of the, you know, citizenry. So a better understanding for us of how to do it, what it is, what it's supposed to be, you know, might be helpful. We say it a lot, but rubber doesn't really.
I think you also need development oriented transit. Uh, because, and I said, it's, the lines haven't changed a whole lot over the years, or well, this matter has. So, you know, it's hard to change the transit line, but sometimes it's, or it's and, um, I think there's a lot of changes to that. The plan does include a fairly large section on transporting development in, in the land use. Um, but it does stop short of strictly defining it and applying it and having rules set up for it. So we, we as a group have to find where that right spot is for the plan to go with that, where the, then probably go to start with that. And there's choices, there's gray area and no. Put that one on the list, do, there's parts that you want to work on, and we're bringing that issue before. And it's definitely one of our serious considerations is to think about that in the now times, but also the next few years when you have an opportunity to really start having training in developments, working.
Very good.
Relevant working in transport. I just made that up. Okay, yes.
For me, the top five, uh, as Commissioner Fernandez, Inspector Commissioner Joseph mentioned, negative DVD now, but the transportation is very essential. More, more like, I think of, uh, airlines, like you have up, up, like Walmart with a symmetry, but then it has a spoke feature, but it's expansive. So there's more density going from point A to B, that's good, but from A to A1, A2, something like that might be essential as well. Because even for us, like we live in North Tampa and love activities in South Tampa or downtown. And we see open parking spaces in North Tampa, like there's a lot of spaces. If there's a transport facility or something that can take us downtown, or even the race activities or the Buccaneer Gym or like a a Lightning Game, it just makes it more easy for people from one place to another to commute as well. And, uh, that was one of the things. And, uh, land use, uh, on speed, incorporate the land use, like usually it's, they want to build more units. Uh, there's an upper level, but is there something we can put like bottom level as well? Like a developer has to develop a bottom, like a minimum number to get to the, uh, higher number of units. So that way the density is maintained. Or, for example, like if I come up with an idea, okay, I'm going to build a hundred units, I change it, but now I only build ten units. Instead of like a percentage, uh, something like that to keep the density continuing to grow as well or something like that. Given we need more housing in the upcoming years. And the third thing you mentioned in the, uh, presentation was the reduction of the a repurposing of the commercial spaces, so we have to adapt to that. But as the situation is cyclical, the commercial spaces might want to come back again. So would it be easier to have like a hybrid model where commercial space and residential spaces can both exist together? And you can just change it back and forth as the need come arises. Because if there's a shift, you can go into residential and if there's a shift towards commercial, you can go into commercial space. Those were some of the concerns or, uh, uh, issues that I thought would be good to highlight this.
Yeah, I'd say that, uh, the commercial corridors and mixed use corridors are the places where that experimental place about mixing uses. Once something becomes residential, it's hard to make it become something else which you, which you care now. It's because of the nature of who's built out of the space or, or making apartments into a dense office.
Yeah.
But, uh, these are good ways. So there's that for you, but the idea is to have mixed use corridors where those things can coexist. And where there's a lot more residential in the corridors, in fact, to meet the demand that we have. Like there's three places to put corridors, neighborhoods, the centers. Those are the only three answers. And so to meet that high demand, corridors are good.
There have been some places that I don't know where they're. Things that might know, um, but that where they require the first floor to be built to commercial standards. They let it be used for residential until there's enough market for it to be leased as commercial.
Oh, the block four.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, the mixed use structure.
So in, in the mixed use, there is, there has been a study done by the Commissioner that figured out, and she's been back and forth with the city about it. But to come up with recommendations to have a certain mix of, of uses in here, and a better defined mix of uses to get a bigger commitment to, um, non-residential development. Yeah, it's useful for that, it's of purpose, but also in conjunction with making sure that the residential density is happy on the site. So there's a policy we're targeting today, and that is something that's part of this problem.
Has the, the consideration of breaking down our, like, multifamily residential land use and zoning categories to a deeper level to where we're actually maybe specifying square footage or basically number of bedrooms. Because that's, I don't know, that's the issue that, that we've got this in. Is that we're getting the one and two bedrooms, we need three and four bedroom multifamily units. Is there, what about breaking down your, your zoning? So besides dwelling units per acre, you're also looking at what you're putting in that room. And having some sort of categorization within that to better meet that housing mix that you need for that community.
We will agenda that for, for. I'm going to work on the agenda of the family housing dispute, and then we'll, we'll give, I'll do more research and come back to that.
Yeah, traditionally has not been something.
Oh, I know traditional, yeah. That's new, yes, and here it's, for sure.
We're, we're getting a lot of pushback in South Tampa for the multifamily. However, that very same person that's seeing that pushback is also telling me that they would, they would support more multifamily in South Tampa if they were three and four bedroom multifamily developments, because that's what's needed. I'll tell you, in the airport space, that's what's needed. So we have a little more senior, uh, military service member than the technical base does, because we have Central Command, Special Operations Command. So we have, we have senior NCOs and field grade officers that have families that have stuff that they retain. And to come into South Tampa, you can't live in a one or two second apartment. So if you had those, if you had those things available in South Tampa, you could have a world-based population living in South Tampa.
I think, uh, you know, I think it's here, that is changing, we're going multifamily in every property. I, I haven't seen a single family home request, you know, since I've been here. Everything's multifamily and I'm on the side of, uh, you know, we have a housing crisis. I mean, is there a way to force maximum units on a lot? Because that's, I mean, ninety thousand people in twenty years, um, that's, that's my view build up. I mean, because the, the, the single family homes, they're, I lived in one in the South Tampa ripped down, somebody bought it out and there's one family living in it, you know, it's five thousand square feet and we aren't going to be one thousand square feet. You know, everybody in there cried with their real state, that we're not going, we have to build affordable housing so we can sustain our city. But things are just going to continue to grow. And so I'm just in the mindset of let them grow in the right spots, but, you know, the, these, I noticed in the Commission a lot, it's like we've done a presentation, well, this is what's next to it. But I, I think at least in the city of Tampa, we have to start thinking, it doesn't matter what's next to it, you know, if you're built out, you have to, your city's going to continue to grow. I don't, I, I think there should be sort of opposite, I'm sorry, I was saying earlier, where is there a way we can maybe dice up those mixed uses, but so that there's not as much, we, you know, we wait, like you have to build it up. Like I looked at the developments in the new gas works in Concord. And when I was, you know, biking my way to the station there, I was just envisioning like, why isn't there a thirty-story residential tower here with some mixed, uh, mixed in affordable housing? So this is my opinion, but I think that's where we're going. It's the days of Tampa being single family homes, maybe, you know, New Tampa, North Tampa still, but, um, you know, I know people buying houses and we step at three hundred thousand dollars. You know, that's, that, we're just going to continue to grow and that's, that's more money coming into there, but there, that was the only single family home they can find in the city of Tampa. So it's just the reality of our city.
I don't think I love some, I'll fight you.
You gotta be careful of that, it's going to be popular in South Tampa.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, that, I don't live anywhere in the complex or the cities in South Tampa, there's work, anyone that's, that we sit here today. But, um, we do have that on the list of things to talk through, you know, where that makes sense. First of all, it does make sense. I think it does, especially with, with TOD, where you create this massive public investment.
We have an issue with developments coming forward, single family developments. Everything we see is more like a.
Yeah, and we're saying, yeah.
So to codify the most possible.
No, just max, just have more detailed, yeah, middle, so that it's, not these four over ones are built, you know, whether it's first floor concrete.
No, just max, just have more detailed, yeah, middle, so that it's not these four over ones are built, you know, whether it's first floor concrete and four stories, voids, apartments in the middle of the city, to sort of where I'm going with that, you know. Let's, let's let them, I don't want to take force them, but make that land use a higher density right off the bat, so that one hundred here, 15 years from now.
We haven't talked about transportation relative to evacuation routes. We've seen a lot of open houses and a lot of panels as I've been around, but denied each one. We're seeing a lot of, of course, we've developed, we've built in some of those areas. So from a long-term strategy standpoint, how do we create complaints, how do we create more transportation to evacuate, you know, some of that sand because it's usable. It's scalable for people to make these deployments. So the land that we have is not all accessible because of some of the evacuations that have to be put into the language. Some of those are, I think we did one over near Hellsboro, West Hellsboro, term fighting a few months ago and we denied it. Talking about Hillborough, one of the businesses, why those things we have, why there's such a vacuum, it's an evacuation zone. Saying it's, it's a bottleneck, a bottleneck area, you can't build something there, they can't contain more capacity for it to be built. So if we're talking about transportation, we're looking at evacuation routes relative to what we built. I think from a long-term strategy standpoint, there's a lot of parcel of it that can utilize, it's a global, but we're not able to do so. I'm not able to point that.
Right.
I agree, and it comes up quite often, it comes up quite often at the city council. Certain parts of town, it's one of the major direction points. So we're, we're talking to that. There is a meeting for an act of the city. Don't want to get into that, how much time is needed?
Yes. So, you know, time to sit here and listen to everybody. I think part of the reason that I don't think being on a planning commission, being involved in this is, see how many people we can pack in. You know, I, I mean, I, I don't know who else here has lived in a big city for how long you've lived in a big city. But I mean, I grew up in Chicago, I knew, I know what it's like to live in a city that's bad. And part of me doesn't want that, I don't want that. I mean, we keep our standards the way they are, we just have to move out. There's a lot of land that needs to be built. So I don't necessarily feel like chasing density to the maximum level is, is, is what we're looking for. I think what it is, is trying to figure out a way to build constructively, so that we have a city that functions, so we have a city that works. You know, it's funny, I asked that question earlier about how much of your plan considers, you know, what we're looking to these other areas, how these other areas are wrong. But then as you were answering it, I thought about it and I said, well, realistically, all the spillover is going there. And that's still, that, that puts us in a great position because we can control what we allow and what we don't allow. I don't think we, we're necessarily in a position to just jack everything up and then, and then what? Then nobody wants to live here again. You know, then our, you know, then our waterway don't look nice. Then our city doesn't look as nice. So, you know, I, I think it's about finding the proper balance. Fine, the whole country wants to move to Florida, that's great. I'm a Realtor, I'm not complaining about it. But at the same time, you know, I'm not voting for every development just because it's a multi-development. I'm voting for what makes sense for our community. And I think that as planning commissioners, as we think about that, I think part of the thought process should be, okay, how do we do this construct? How do we do this in a way that works? Because at the end of the day, you know, we, we've had all sorts of different things come across our table. I mean, I, I think a couple of years ago, when I first started out here, we had somebody who was putting a skateboarding ramp in their backyard and somebody was complaining about this skateboarding ramp in the, in the unincorporated part of the county. And that, that, that's what we were dealing with before. And now we're dealing with, you know, all of these apartments that are going in, in South Tampa, south of Gandy. You know, is there a need? Yes, there's need, how do we control that need? And what are we looking to fill with that? You know, if a city, as a city grows, you've moved to downtown Chicago and you've got that city there, well, who do you have that lives there? Professionals and small families with one or two kids. And then once they get bigger, where do they move into the suburbs? Well, that's the world, that's how bigger cities are, that's how we're going to end up being too. So these smaller one and two bedroom apartments that are going up, they're fulfilling a need. Those younger professionals that are moving here are providing a need. And it's what's helping our city grow because we can support, you know, we can support the restaurants that we love to go to. We can support all these different things that we love to enjoy. But I think, I think part of figuring this out is not necessarily just loosening it up more. Because if we loosen it up more, then this turns into a place where nobody wants to live. So try to find a happy.
Yeah. I think for the plan as it stands, and we're probably going with this too, there's a, there's definitely a balance from the beginning. Where you have neighborhoods that are, that are, tend to be preserved by large, a large section of the city in that. And then in between them, there's corridor centers that are not a whole lot of land where density is being promoted. And so that's the, that's the, that's both the balance and the tension of the policy of this is happening. So the tension of the future is like, in fact, those places where we have land to build, we all have to use efficiently. Where this mindset of do, do it to the extent we can for people in those places, which means nobody wants to be in that city. So I think we have to think two dimensionally, when we think about the issue you raised. And where are we promoting it and where are we not? And that's where the part of the mindset balance comes in. The other is just where we do promote it. Well, it doesn't make sense if we're about the infrastructure, right? That are, is part of what it is. But, but I do think that if you, if you don't do enough accommodation in, in the city, because of the demand not ceasing on here, you're going to have nagging and affordability problem in the house, in any venue. And a fair amount of destabilization in neighborhoods in terms of, you know, construction, people that are going on there. Sensitive issues in the city because they have a strong desire to maintain the culture of history in certain places. And so you have to balance that out too. People are calling for that. So I think there's like several different balancing ends that we have. One is hoping about, you can get to the point where some places overdeveloped to the point where it's had a significant negative external impact that all of a sudden, you're starting to create a problem. That's definitely possible. So that's.
I think it's important to, to point out that in what app, the report that Alan, we sent out on Thursday, you know, there's a, there's a policy that maybe is citywide, but then, and that's been the approach that we've taken for a really long time. Sort of one policy might apply across the whole city. But maybe now it's time to be more nuanced and look geographically at some of these recommendations and then make some actual map changes to facilitate what we want in the right places. Instead of as, as you were saying, kind of letting the market kind of plod, plod, bring them to us. Maybe we need to be proactive about where we want it. The other thing that I would mention is that while a lot of the plan amendments that you all have seen of late, and just all the ones you were briefed on today, seem to be going to higher density residential. There are quite a bit of times that, that staff has seen rezonies come in for new development that is below what the category allows on the map. You don't necessarily get to see those development applications, but there are times when people will come in for attached townhomes instead of apartments or, you know, single family instead of where they could be doing townhomes or duplexes. So there, there may be some opportunities still to kind of incentivize or encourage people to do that slightly higher density development in the places we want them to.
And in for me, last part of the week.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
I see Dennis achieved on every face in the room. So I appreciate this conversation. Important part of the project, and this feedback's been vital. So I learn something every time I'm listening to you. We've made the project better today, and we'll definitely address some of those things. You have to do the report, and you can see what it looks like. And you can always submit additional commentary at any time.
Yeah, please, if there's something you see in the report you have a question about, or you want to make a comment, thought of something after the fact, let myself, Melissa, Jennifer know. Take your input anyway. I'm going to call you workshop adjourned.
Oh, okay, yeah, thanks for your time. And we'll call this workshop adjourned, I think we have our hearings at 5:30, so short break, then back at any other meeting workshop adjourned.